I'd like to call to order the meeting of Monday, August the 8th. And if the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Amos. Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have the minutes before you from the regular meeting of July 11th. Before I ask for a motion, just so you know, the time of adjournment is incorrect on those minutes and it will be changed. So, if I could have a motion, please.
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there any other deletions, additions, changes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, minutes will stand as submitted. We do have two presentations tonight. If the clerk would please read the first one.
The Beautification Commission members will recognize the 2016 Yard of the Year winners.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Mayor Rep., City Council, and City Manager Freed for the opportunity to recognize the talented gardeners of our city. I am Kathleen Morozic, the Chair of the Beautification Commission. As you may be aware, the City of Port Huron Council created a 21-member volunteer beautification commission on August 28th, 1985. Over the years, the number of the board members have been reduced and currently, the commission is now comprised of nine-member board dedicated individuals. This year marks 32nd year of the existence of a beautification commission since it was created. The commission's mission is to enhance and maintain the natural beauty of the city of Port Huron and to create and foster citizen pride by developing programs, projects, and annual events. At this time, I would like to introduce the Beautification Commission members in attendance tonight. If they will please stand as I read their names. Diane Horn. Nicole Hettinson. Sally Jett. Donna Kelly. Laura Latrell. Stephanie Romalis. Life members which also include over 10 years of service are Mary Jo Edson. Kathy Holt. Carolyn McNeil. Evelyn Rogers. We have volunteers that are Ashley Cox and Rose Cota and Julie Harrison. The City Council annually appropriates money to assist the commission with purchasing of the flowers and to help us sponsor the Yard of the Year contest and tree recognition program. We appreciate this allotment of funds. Beautification has currently maintained approximately 25 flower beds located throughout the city. Members and volunteers prepare and plant these flowers each season and then provide the ongoing weeding and maintenance of the beds. Beautification also sponsors the tree recognition program whereby individuals can have a tree planted on city property in memory of a loved one or a dear friend to honor their recognition individual. Finally, the annual Yard of the Year contest is also sponsored by the Beautification Commission. This contest provides us with the opportunity to showcase beautiful landscaping of our residents and businesses. Lastly, I would like to thank a number of city employees who helped make the Beautification commission so successful. Sue Child. Ben Pionk. And Kelsey, I don't think she's here tonight, and Nancy Windsor. At this time, I would like to introduce Stephanie Romalis and Sally Jett, who are co-chairs of the Yard of the Year.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This year marks 29 years for the Beautification Commission's annual Yard of the Year contest. This object of the contest is to encourage people and businesses to beautify their property. Properties are judged by master gardeners who look for very specific things such as design, overall appearance, neatness, and plant materials. The judges are impartial and good at what they do. They follow a point system and they judge only the front of the properties. Our dresses are given to the judges without them knowing who the owner is. The city is divided into three districts. North District, northern city limits to the Blue Water Bridge and I-94. Central District, Blue Water Bridge, I-94, south to Grithwold Street. South District, Grithwold Street to the southern city limits. It is interesting to note that there have been 591 awards presented since the inception of the contest. This total includes today's recipients. We have recognized 358 residential and 233 commercial businesses. This year, 72 nominations were received. Residential winners will receive the coveted wooden yellow tulip and commercial winners will be presented with a plaque. Repeat winners will receive either a leaf to add to the stem of their original tulip or a date plate for their plaque in the case of a business or nonprofit. We will now announce the winners and ask if an individual or their representative is here tonight that they come forward to accept their award.
We're going to begin with the north end.
294 Bonham Court. Lillian Schlohmann.
She would be receiving a leaf. She was unable to attend today. We will make sure it goes to her.
304 Addison Boulevard. Frank and Roberta Helsom.
Just a moment. You'll notice they have a couple of tulips. They've been an on again, off again. I don't know if they, every year, but they've been in there for a number of years.
1009 Elmwood Street. Central District. 1713 Lyons Street. Monica Sakowski.
And she, again, is not able to attend, so we will make sure her tulip gets to her. She received a leaf. She's again a repeat. That's a beautiful job. Thank you.
822 Court Street.
South End.
1236 Oak Street. Jerry and Rosemary Arnold.
Put their tulip off to the side.
1016 Cypress Street. Hannah Lydiert.
And she was unable to attend.
2458 Military Street.
On to our commercial properties.
Quality Inn and Suites. We'll see that they get their plaque. A beautiful job. This concludes, oh, first of all, we wish to thank the citizens of Port Huron for their hard work, their time, their dedication that they have given to help beautify our city. This concludes our annual awards program. We would like to thank our judges, the photographer Alexander Romalis, who took the photos, the Clerk's Office for their clerical assistance, and of course, the City Council for giving us this venue. As a reminder, the Beautification Commission is always seeking volunteers who are interested in civic planning. We can always use the help, contact the Clerk's Office if you can give your time and energy. We thank you.
Yes, or if you're out and you just see us in the flowerbeds, stop by and talk to us. Get some information, please.
Thank you and congratulations to all of the winners. Councilmember Ashford, did you have something?
No, I was just thinking about the hard job you had with the heat, all this heat, and you had to keep the water coming and, you know, so, wasn't that a challenge this year?
It is a bit of a challenge. We fought against water in a number of our beds, but this year seems to be going very well.
Right, yeah, and they look good, too. Right, they look good. Thank you, Mayor Rep.
Thank you. We will move on to presentation number two.
Representatives from the United States Coast Guard will present water safety tips.
Good evening. My name is Lieutenant Commander Rob Berry and I'm the Chief of Response Operations at Coast Guard Sector Detroit. Thank you for this timely opportunity to present an extremely important public safety message prior to the August 21st St. Clair River unsanctioned float down event which poses significant hazards to participants. As first responders committed to the well-being of others, the Coast Guard does not condone participation in float down, but those that choose to participate are urged to use common sense water safety practices. Tonight, though, I not only represent the U.S. Coast Guard, I'm also here to deliver a public message of safety and solidarity with first responder partners from 19 U.S. and Canadian agencies at the federal, state, provincial, and local levels who will dedicate themselves to all involved in the inherently dangerous 2016 float down on the St. Clair River. As you're aware, float down is a non-sanctioned marine event involving thousands of participants floating for hours down seven and a half miles of fast-moving cold water, many not wearing life jackets and consuming alcohol while on flimsy uncontrollable rafts. All this on one of the busiest transborder shipping lanes in North America, which is frequented by 1,000-foot cargo ships. Last year, a total of 285 people who were in danger of drowning or getting caught on dangerous obstructions and pilings were assisted by first responders during float down and four people were hospitalized. Many of those assisted were pulled from the water because they were too intoxicated or weak from hypothermia to help themselves and they were in danger of drowning. Additionally, we estimate that more than 1,500 participants were uncontrollably pushed across the international border last year by the wind and the current and 150 people were reportedly separated from their groups. Tragically, in 2014, a 19-year-old college student who was reportedly a strong swimmer and avid water skier lost his life despite participating in float down with nearly 40 friends. Tragedy can happen quickly and it can happen to anyone, especially to those who fail to take appropriate safety precautions. Our neighbors, friends, and family members who choose to ignore these recommendations put themselves at significant personal risk by floating down the seven-and-a-half-mile course. The fast-moving current, the large number of participants, lack of life jackets, alcohol consumption, potentially challenging weather conditions, cold water temperatures, and limited rescue resources conspire to create a very difficult emergency response scenario that may result in serious injuries or fatalities. For those that do participate despite local, state, federal, and international safety advisories, you're strongly encouraged to take several precautions. This inherently dangerous activity, this is an inherently dangerous activity, especially for minors, the Coast Guard does not recommend they participate at all. We strongly encourage all participants and require those less than 18 years of age within the float down safety zone to wear appropriately sized, U.S. Coast Guard-approved life jackets at all times. Second, participants should file a float plan with someone not participating who can report your intentions to the Coast Guard in the event that you don't check in at the scheduled time at the conclusion of the event. Also, participants should never go alone. They should use the buddy system and keep an eye on each other and immediately report incidents of distress to the nearest first responder. Additionally, participants should refrain from consuming alcohol immediately prior to or during the event. They should dress appropriately for weather and cold water. Use a raft that limits your immersion in the water and can be controlled with paddles. Don't swim away from your raft as strong currents can quickly cause the raft to get away from you. And finally, stay near shore and remain out of the navigation channel. The maritime environment, the combination of the motion of the seas, the sun, and the winds, they accelerate the effects of alcohol. Alcohol can also increase fatigue and susceptibility to the effects of cold water, further impairing a person's judgment, vision, and reaction time. Water temperatures during recent float down events have averaged in the high 60-degree Fahrenheit range. Please recognize that immersion in water below approximately 70 degrees can lead to hypothermia that impairs physical performance and degrades a person's ability to swim. Early signs of hypothermia include shivering and loss of coordination and judgment. Strong river currents under the Blue Water Bridge and westerly winds have pushed participants beyond the navigable channel and onto Canadian shores in the past, leaving them subject to U.S. and Canadian border security, stranded often without identification, money, or means of communication. In past years, southerly winds have slowed rafters' progress, leading to over six hours of time on the river from Port Huron to Chrysler Beach in Marysville. This extended time on the St. Clair River with limited public access locations for landing prior to Marysville makes people even more vulnerable to the effects of alcohol, hypothermia, and other challenging environmental conditions. Even though float down is not a sanctioned marine event, there is considerable coordination with federal, state, local, and Canadian law enforcement and first responder agencies. Due to the hazardous nature of the activity and its proximity to the international border, this is not to suggest we are condoning the event, we're simply holding true to our first responder core values. Last year, we coordinated the patrols of 38 U.S. and Canadian boats and several U.S. helicopters. To put this in perspective, planning and resources for float down mirror the combined efforts that go into the International Fort Fireworks Festival on the Detroit River and the Port Huron to Mackinac Race, sanctioned marine events that are sponsored, planned, and coordinated for the betterment of public safety. Again, we don't condone the event, but due to the anticipated number of people floating on the St. Clair River, the U.S. Coast Guard is advising the boating public that on Sunday, August 21st, the St. Clair River will be secured to all motor vessel traffic between the hours of 12:00 noon and 8:00 p.m. as a prudent safety measure given the realities of the event and to reduce the risk of fatalities from boating traffic. All traffic requesting to enter the safety zone must receive approval from the U.S. Coast Guard Station Port Huron via VHF Marine Radio Channel 21 Alpha. The U.S. Coast Guard is a highly trained, professional maritime search and rescue agency with limited resources. We embrace that responsibility, but we, as other first responders, cannot be everywhere. We rely on friends, family members, and all other users of the marine environment to look out for one another, to take care of themselves, and wear life jackets, and also not drink alcohol while on the water, all to improve the likelihood that they will return home safely. In closing, I'd like to thank the City of Port Huron for assisting first responder agencies and spreading our message of concern and safety and for continuing to partner with us to improve float down safety in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on now to public hearings, number one, please.
Just to hear comments on the consolidated annual performance evaluation report known as CAPER for the 2015 program year and to review a copy is available on our website.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number one relative to the CAPER? Seeing no one, declare public hearing number one closed. We'll move on now to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, please come forward, give us your name, and you have four minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron Stewart, 3120 North Range Road. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Main Street Memories Car Show Committee and we would like to thank the council members who attended our July 30th event. Mayor Rep., council members, Mr. Freed, we feel that with just over 200 cars in attendance, it was a success for our first year out. We have seven committee members and there's 12 volunteers that day to put this event on, and of that group, only 90% of the members have experience of even putting something of this magnitude on. So, in the next few weeks, we look forward to sitting down with the department heads to discuss this year's show, what we can do to build on next year's event. We hope to be able to keep this show and keep it at the same time every year. This year, we supported the Council on Aging and although the bills are not in yet from the city, we hope to make a significant contribution to the Council on Aging. Our committee also takes pride in knowing that the downtown business district was as clean, if not as cleaner, as when we arrived at 6:00 a.m. So, again, thanks to everyone to make this possible. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you and thank you for you and your volunteers. It was a wonderful show, so I hope you do continue to do it year after year.
Thank you.
It's great. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? They can come forward now and you state your name and have four minutes. Seeing no one, declare public comment closed. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Items on the consent agenda, received and filed notification from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission on transfer ownership of two 2016 SDM licenses, one located at 1635 Pine Grove Avenue and one located at 1026 Military Street. Also, received and filed notification that the annual conflict of interest statements have been reviewed and no discrepancies have been noted. Made permanent two traffic control orders, one on Robinson Street to stop for Walnut Street and the other one is a number of them for Water Street, making it permanent, designated one way eastbound from Military to Fourth Street. Water Street shall stop for Fourth Street and Fourth Street shall stop for Water Street. Also, confirm and approved a single lot special assessment for the cost of an emergency board up at 2420 10th Avenue. Approved the tentative boundaries of the wall and Court Street Neighborhood Enterprise Zone and scheduling a public hearing for September 12th to hear comments on the establishment of the proposed wall on Court Street Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. Scheduled a public hearing for September 12th, comments on establishing an obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act District and for a certificate both at 1103 3rd Street and 308 Wall Street. Confirmed several appointments, reappointments of Mike Russell and Jeff Wine to the Planning Commission, terms to expire August 11th, 2019. Michael Cogley and James Dewey to the Zoning Board of Appeals for terms to expire July 1, 2019. Dan Casey and Robert Funk, one, Dan Casey's term for July ending June 11th, 2019, and Robert Funk's for June 11, 2020, for the Local Development Finance Authority. Confirming and approving single lot special assessments for the cost of sidewalk replacement in the right-of-way. Approving the taxi cab licenses for the 2016-17 licensing year. So then we will go to, from the City Manager, the first item.
Accepting the quote from Pro Comm Incorporated in the amount of $21,642 for 24 radio headsets to be used by the fire department to outfit six apparatus.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz? Is there discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Mayor Rep., this is a budget, is this a budget item, I believe?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
No, it is not a budget item. This was personal protective equipment in which I have Chief of Operations, main guy here to speak to it, that we will be required to purchase and we will have to amend our budget at the end of the year to account for this. Chief Main Guy, if you'd come up and briefly describe to the council the need and application of what this will be used for.
And before he talks, you said we are being required to do this, we're being mandated?
Yeah, when we, when we deem it as personal protective equipment, we are required to provide it for the firefighters.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Freed and Mayor and Council, good evening. Yes, each year, the fire staff receive a physical examination and in that is a hearing screening. After this past year's screenings, we had four members of our department that came back with reductions in their hearing threshold. And one member was actually sent for follow-up to a hearing specialist who returned with the directive that he wear hearing protection while onboard the apparatus. In order to do that effectively, conventional hearing protection of muffs or earplugs are impractical because it doesn't allow them to hear critical radio traffic and communicate among their crew on the apparatus. We did in the interim outfit him with a standalone set of hearing protection that connected to his portable radio, but again, with challenges of feedback over the radio and not able to hear what his crews or his drivers, any communication among staff. The only practical solution to that is to outfit the apparatus with these headsets similar to the aviation industry that allow both the ability to have an open intercom among the crew in the cab as well as communicate over the radio. And they do provide the hearing protections necessary and takes care of the problem of the ability to communicate over the radio and with each other.
Okay, understand. So it's a safety precaution.
Correct. What our hope is, we had four members that had some reductions in their hearing. If we provide this equipment to the entire staff in all seated riding positions, that we get out in front of this and maybe reduce any possibility of anyone else having a reduction in the future.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
Chief Main Guy, can you speak real quickly to the budgeted installation time and the potential that this will be a reduction?
I can, yes. This price is quoted as a per apparatus install and it's an installed price. They're figured at about eight hours per apparatus, but the vendor has assured me that if they're less time than eight hours per apparatus, maybe they get two of them done in a day, that they will certainly only charge us for the hours that it takes to install. So we may actually realize some savings. This would be a what you call worst-case scenario if it took eight hours for all the rigs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Rep. Yes, any other questions from council?
Why didn't we not go with the wireless headsets and?
And I'm assuming these are ones that are plugging into?
This equipment that we're bringing to you has three direct wire headsets and one wireless for the driver. I can address your question. The wireless technology allows each headset to be put on and possibly forgotten in the heat of the moment as the firefighters exit the rig. They're going to put their helmets and their other breathing apparatus on. They've left their headset on. Now what do we do with it? Do we put them in the snow? Do we, I mean, this way, they're reminded they have to take those off and leave them on the apparatus. With the exception of the driver's position is going to be wireless, because it actually serves additional hearing protection for the driver, who at most calls is the designated pump operator, and he's operating the apparatus at a rev speed. He's outside of the cab, but he's going to have a distance that he can be away from the cab of the truck, still have hearing protection, and still be able to communicate via radio while he's operating the pump and performing other support functions on the fire ground. So, we decided to go with the direct wire, so we don't have an equipment replacement issue down the road as we go.
Makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Item two, please.
Is accepting the bid from Jorgensen Ford in the amount of fifty-nine thousand dollars for two two thousand sixteen Ford F-250 four-by-four pickup trucks with snowplow for use by the cemetery, parks, and recreation department.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald and Councilmember Ashford, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Harris.
I guess my comment about this here is, I just kind of want to compliment who's ever doing the bidding resources in this. I think we had like eight or nine bidders for this piece of equipment, and even though it's identified as Ford four-by-four trucks and stuff, we had bids from General Motors dealers and Chrysler Fiat dealers. And I just thought it was really interesting that we got so many competitive bids, and I'll support this.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council?
Yeah, Mayor Rep, yeah, is this a budget, in the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Rep.
Madam Mayor, just want to know, I believe if I'm correct, Lenny, we beat state bid?
State bid was through your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Item three, please.
Is accepting the bid from Lynch's Small Engine in the amount of thirty thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the purchase of three lawn mowers for use by the cemetery and the parks and forestry divisions.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz? Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Harris.
I just wanted to thank Nancy and the staff here. We had been carrying on quite a conversation the last couple of days, because I went on the internet to try to find out what the best types of lawn mowers there were there. And it's earth-shattering that the price comparisons on the different lawn mowers, the older ton of lawn mowers there are out there. And unfortunately for anybody that buys these things, you go from a sixty-inch mower to a seventy-two-inch mower, and you're talking almost four or five thousand dollars difference. And I just think that I'll be glad when we see these in work. Maybe I'll bring some rain to the cemetery, so.
That would be nice. Mayor Rep, Councilmember Ashford.
Yeah, are these replacing any, or are these new, or what do we, the old ones? Can we have some history around here?
Madam Mayor, as Nancy comes up, Nancy, could you bring your two division heads up as well to speak to the application of how they use these? I'd like the council to get the boots-on-the-ground use for this equipment as well.
Mayor Rep and City Council, this is replacing three other mowers we have. And the mowers we have are anywhere from twelve to sixteen years old. They've been there almost as long as me, and most of them have been repaired quite a bit. And we start to look at, you know, well, here's some pictures, but you start to look at, you know, taking them out of service and, you know, having them available to the workers, and having them break down, and all the costs that goes into the replacement. So, we've definitely, my understanding is it's seven to ten years on a mower, a commercial mower like this, and we've definitely exceeded that life span. So, it's definitely a need, for sure. And it is a budgeted item, and came in under budget for the three mowers, so.
What are you going to do with the, is it junk now?
Pretty much, I'll let you guys answer that. I think most of it is probably going to be as junk, I would say.
Yes, I mean, they've been repaired enough that I don't know that they would be worth anything to anybody, honestly. As you can see in that photo there, the deck's been welded together. We've actually added metal to reinforce things. I mean, they're just, they're shot. So, probably be more spare parts than anything for us at this point.
Madam Mayor, Tom, can you speak to the mower decks in its relationship to the cemetery stones and the pass and how it fits in there?
Good evening, Mayor Rep, members of council. The cemetery's uses are very unique. We couldn't get like a seventy-two-inch mower. A forty-eight-inch mower requires three passes down each row, where a sixty-inch mower can do it in two passes. So if we get a sixty-inch mower, it reduces man-hours, and it lets us get the job done quicker. The model we are replacing is a two thousand model. It's been used heavily. It's a forty-eight-inch. It has really bad wiring issues. Right now, the pulleys, spindles are shot, and we have an estimate of five hundred and thirty dollars just to get it fixed.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions from council? I think you got it all covered. Thank you. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Item four, please.
Is accepting the bid from Body Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of six hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars for the North Boulevard Water Main and Street Improvements Project.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski separated by, separated, supported. Where'd that come from? Councilmember Harris. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Is this going from Thirty-second to military or electric?
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
This is the project that everybody's been waiting for, for a long time, if I'm not mistaken?
Needs it.
Yeah. Any other questions? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Item five, please.
Is accepting the proposal from M-Tech in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the purchase of a used street sweeper for the Public Works Division.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald and Councilmember Ashford, is there discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yeah, Mayor Rep, I understand that the recommended bid of a hundred and sixty thousand is with the contingency that the city will attempt to sell current equipment outright. And that word "attempt," are we expecting any issues or problems or barriers you have to?
Councilmember Ashford, Mayor, council. The use of the word "attempt" is, I guess, problematic. We are going to sell it, we know. We're going to get about between eight and ten thousand for our current equipment. We had asked for a trade-in allowance in, as part of our proposal, or RFP, of twenty thousand. Bell was willing to give us that. M-Tech said they weren't. But even so, the M-Tech sweeper that we are recommending purchase is the best deal out there, and I could explain why if you want to know.
I beg your pardon?
I'm sorry?
He said he could explain why.
Yes, the, at Mr. Freed's suggestion, we went and looked not just for new sweepers, but we looked for late-model used sweepers to see if we can find a better deal.
Okay.
We asked for proposals from several companies. We got several back. The M-Tech model that we got back is a two thousand and fifteen model. It's a demo. It has thirty hours and seventy miles on it, which is relatively new. And they were offering it to us for a hundred and sixty thousand. The next best one was from Bell, which was the two thousand and sixteen, but it had seven hundred and fifty hours and eleven hundred miles for a hundred and fifty-five thousand, plus turning in our used sweepers for a credit. We feel that the best vehicle would be the M-Tech Global M-three, which is just a Pelican with a different steering system, and we thought for the hundred and sixty thousand. Plus, even if we weren't to get the full ten thousand, and we think that our trade-in would be worth it, still the best vehicle that was proposed.
Oh, okay. Well, that sounds good. And then you did answer my question.
I'm sorry.
That sounds good, and you did answer my question in terms of, I was worried about the attempts, you know, if we didn't do it, are we stuck with this truck or what? But you're confident that we can, we don't have any issue with that.
That's correct.
Oh, okay. So just a phasology thing. So thank you so very much. Thank you, Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Harris.
I guess one more question I had. When I looked at the bottom line from a two thousand and fifteen used one, even though it's slightly used, to the two thousand and sixteen one for a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, is there a benefit to going with the other sixteen thousand dollars to get a brand-new one? It's a year newer. It could have some updating?
You would think there'd be benefit, but in fact, the vehicles are essentially identical, and they get the same warranty.
Okay.
So, with the same warranty, and the demo model is essentially a new vehicle for sixteen thousand less, we thought it was the better deal.
Good answer.
Any other questions from Councilmember Lewandowski?
Mr. Mayor, will we still have one in backup if we sell the two? I believe they're Johnsons or Johnsons. Are we going to still have one for backup?
We will, but it's not really in very good repair, and we'll be evaluating that in the coming year. We're going to be, we don't really want to use regenerative air anymore. We want to go with mechanical systems.
So you'll have the air vac, you'll have the new one, and then which one will be the one in reserve?
Sorry.
You'll have the air vac, you'll have the new mechanical one that we're buying. Which one will we have in reserve?
We're just going to have the one that's really operational that we're buying, that we're going to be trading. The one that's currently usable is the one that's going to get any value. The others are Hulks, and they're really of no value. We're going to just package them to get them off of our lot. We've scavenged all the parts that we feel we can use.
Okay. So you don't think, taking both of them together, you couldn't part it out to make one good one for reserve?
Well, we don't think we, we can't get the parts anymore for those old ones.
So how many do we actually have? Will we actually have, once we get this one?
When we're done, we'll have one.
We'll just have one. And where does that leave us? What should we have?
Two.
Two. So you will be coming back to us at a later date? Is that it?
In another year.
Okay.
Well, they should still have the air vac, though. That one's somewhat new. I know you don't want to use them anymore, but we still have that one.
But it is not very functional. Right.
But is there?
Right.
Thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to resolution number one.
Is authorizing fifteen payments.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford. Is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to item two under resolutions, please.
Is approving a historic designation special use permit to allow a non-owner-occupied bed and breakfast facility in an existing single-family house in an R-one, single- and two-family residential district, zoning district at twelve oh five Seventh Street.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Before I open it for discussion, I wonder if we could have David Haynes maybe explain this whole thing, what's happening?
Good idea.
Good evening, council. What you have before you today is a recommendation that started with the Historic District Commission. They in turn recommended approval to the Planning Commission in review of this property. This property, located on the corner of Seventh Street and Court Street, is a home that was built in roughly eighteen fifty. It was the Ballantyne Home. And more recently, it is now owned by Trish and Carl Moss. You might recall this house was originally, well, not originally, about ten years ago, it was a seven-unit apartment complex, and basically looked like it was ready for the wrecking ball. The Mosses came forward and purchased the home, spent a lot of time and energy rehabbing it and bringing it back to what is now a beautiful home. They are currently renting the property, and it is the tenant who is requesting the special use for bed and breakfast. And her intentions are to purchase the property in the near future.
Thank you. I'll open it up, I guess, before I ask any questions to anybody on council who has any que, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald.
Mayor Rep, David, can you give me some explanation of the intent and how long a stay would be for the bed and breakfast? And I understand through the application, she's only looking to rent two of the rooms?
Correct.
Of the five. So, is that a typical weekend stay? Are we looking at putting any restrictions on how long someone can stay at the bed and breakfast?
As you just mentioned, typically a bed and breakfast is for a short time period. We don't have any restrictions in place, but as we had, next to this property was the Victorian Inn. And typically, that was a weekend or a couple of night stay. That's her intentions as well. She has no intentions of expanding it beyond the two-bedroom use. Part of the requirement of, because of this location and also the use of bed and breakfast, is that this property needed to be designated historical. What that does, it then allows it to have more latitude within our zoning. So that was kind of the process we needed to go through. But the intent is to have it a, one resident with the two rooms being available for bed and breakfast.
Thank you.
You have Councilmember Harris.
Is this the first application we've had for unoccupied bed and breakfast?
For rented or for a tenant-owned?
Yeah.
Yes.
What are the future implications? I know we have landowners in the city of Port Huron that currently do it under a different system, and I know we have a bed and breakfast down on Sixth Street that, you know, is this going to lead to a chain of events? Or can you predict that?
We haven't had that many requests for bed and breakfast, only a handful. And as you might recall, the Victorian Inn was just that. It was a non-owner-occupied, owned by the Secory and Peterson family, and they had a caretaker that was at the home and who managed the bed and breakfast.
Yeah, looking at what's been done so far with the bed and breakfast and the ones that are currently in Port Huron and stuff, I kind of share the fact that these people have taken a good interest in their properties, and by and large, they're all a little better in state of repair than any normal home in Port Huron. So it's, maybe it's a step in the right direction. It's always kind of leery when you do something for the first time, but I think it'll work.
And it's a beautiful home. And if you have any questions as to what kind of work has gone on, which has been, you know, incredible, Carl and Trish are here in the audience, and they'd be glad to answer any of your questions on the process.
Anyone else on council?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Ruiz.
There was a vote, there was a single vote that went against us?
Yes.
It was not there, but are you, are you privy to telling us what the, was there a voice that had reasons why they voted against it or was that just not part of the process?
They were concerned of setting a precedent by approving a non-owner-occupied, but the balance of the Planning Commission felt that the benefits outweighed that risk. We typically don't see that many bed and breakfast type of uses, and they are very specialized, not just, these properties need to be historic in nature, and they tend to be well-cared-for homes, and just the process in of itself, I think, will preclude, you know, any, you know, mass filings of others trying to create bed and breakfast and not having the same impact in the neighborhoods as these type of properties.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Not so much equipment or a question as it is a statement. You know, we talked about it at the Planning Commission, the lady, you know, she does live in the house, she doesn't intend to buy it. She does own a restaurant down the road from it, so it's not something that's going to be somewhat new to her. We asked why, I think it was '97 or '98, that the law changed or the ordinance changed that it had to be owner-occupied, and nobody really had a good reason as to why that happened. Obviously, I wasn't around, you know, paying attention back then, but, and nobody really had a good reason as to why the city did it. It was, Lynn Secory was there and she said after she bought the Victorian Inn, the law changed at that point, even though she had an innkeeper there, and, you know, she didn't personally stay there herself. So I supported it. I still support it. I think the lady who plans on running is going to do a heck of a job, and I think it's going to be great for that neighborhood. And, you know, as Ms. Secory said when she was there, they looked at that house before they bought the Victorian Inn, and they thought it was too far gone to be saved, and the Mosses came in. I think he spent 10 or 13 years fixing it up, and, you know, it's a wonderful house, and I don't, I think that's going to be the best use for it and for the city.
Mayor Rep? Yes, go ahead.
Councilman Lewandowski, you said she does intend to buy?
Yeah, her intention was to purchase the home within the next, I believe, two or three years. She just, finances wasn't, you know, something that could be done at this point, but she does live there, she's, you know, going to stay living there, and her intention is to purchase it.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
That does bring up just a follow-up question for me. Can you explain, the permit is for the tenant, not the owner, at this time, correct?
It's for the use.
It's for the use.
So if something were to happen and the tenant didn't buy it down the road and moves out,
does it remain in effect or does it leave with her or?
It travels with the property.
It travels, it stays with the property, not with the tenant?
Right.
Thank you.
And I assume that the people living around it have been notified and they have no objections. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other discussion? Thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We're done with the resolutions. Ordinance, first, number one, please.
Is being given its first reading and is an ordinance to amend Chapter 22 Environment Article 2 Blight of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances for the purpose of updating the descriptions for causes of blight.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep? I just had one question, and I don't, my iPad's not working right now, but in one of the ordinance, there was something about hanging stuff on the porch, and I know some of those people like to put those sunscreens. I wanted to make sure that wasn't going to be considered part of, I know they had tarps and blankets and stuff like that, but I wanted to make sure the sunscreens weren't going to be part of that.
David?
I'm late-ish.
Yeah. Or is it, is it David?
Yeah, it would be Chief and Marcy, but they're not here.
They're not here.
I can have, I'll email an answer to you guys.
It's just being given its first reading tonight, so we could have an answer before the second reading as far as whether that would be included or not.
Well, I can read what it says. It does say with no blankets, tarps, or unsightly plastic coverings or hangings on porches.
Does that mean unsightly hangings, I would assume, is what they're talking, but then that's a matter of, it's a matter of opinion, so, yeah.
As I know, some people like to go out and read on the porch and they have the sunscreens that they do put down, so I wanted to make sure that wasn't something that was going to be.
They can get back with us on that one? Yeah. And then if there's any changes that need to be made, they can make it for the next reading, so.
That's fine.
Okay. Any other questions?
I guess more than questions. I had some comments. I was looking at some of the items in here and that maybe should be addressed, but in Section 2234 1A, it describes vehicles and then it describes a vehicle. And basically, we had parameters that are sitting there now that we allowed people to have custom, if they're approved by the administration, you could have something to cover up your vehicle and stuff when it wasn't, wasn't being on the road and stuff like that. Well, this seems to unlace it because now it would basically uncover the other, it says, the vehicles would, vehicle or vehicles could, if they run and were fit for the road, they could be maintained in an uncovered position. And I guess my question was with the way it was, the way it was explained in plural and singular, that there might be some interpretation, whether it's one vehicle or two vehicles or three vehicles. And we have seemed to have gotten away from covering up these things that are going to sit there because basically, the exemption talks about vehicles that aren't used in daily work use and stuff. As we go further on down in 2234 2B, we talk about instead of, we can't use Plexiglas for fixing a window. And I know in doors and stuff, there's some requirements, some of the doors, if you break a glass door, you have to replace with Plexiglas. And I just kind of wonder if we've gone a little bit beyond what we should be doing. The other thing that I looked at in is basically, we're talking about shrubs now, and it said that shrubs, and in the add language, is maintained in a healthy condition. Who's going to determine the healthy condition of a person's shrubs? Or is it the Blight Patrol or the code enforcement officers? It kind of leaves some vague questions and stuff because now you're going to make decisions based on personal opinion, I think. And I guess the big question that kind of hit me and that would have come a long time, it's under 2234, item 4G, and it talks about the property between the sidewalk and the street, which is commonly known as the Boulevard. And under this new ordinance, it'll be the landowner's responsibility to maintain the trees in a healthy condition, properly trimmed or dead and decaying limbs, and not creating a safety hazard. Are we getting to a point that we're not going to have our forestry department take care of the trees on the Boulevard anymore? According to this addition to this ordinance, it kind of leaves something, at least something that I've asked the question and I've had people ask me the question, are we saying, okay, the forest department no longer going to do this? It doesn't say that, but it is, it kind of assumes that. Further on down, in some of the, later on the items, and I know that when you get in legal terms, whether it's may or shall and stuff, there is a lot of positions in there under the current ordinances and stuff. It says that you shall do this, you shall do that, and in three or four of the different positions on this legal letter, it's been changed to may. Well, when you change from shall to may, you're giving, you're giving some latitude that I don't know if the people deserve, not people, I don't know if the person deserves that may. I think we're, we're talking about creating a blight ordinance that works for the city. Now we're giving some options. Instead of you shall do it, you may do it. So that's, those are just some of the thoughts that I brought up, and like I said, I'm glad it's just here for discussion tonight, but I think that there's enough things in this that we should really look at it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'll, I have a list of the concerns Councilman Lewandowski and Harris brought up, and I will list off a memo and forward on to council, explain those positions.
On all of those items? I am assuming on the vehicles, they just want it so you do not have them covered with just tarp-type, correct? Things that zip up and that type of thing, that just go over the cars? That would be my assumption, but, yeah, the, I think we do need the answers to all of those questions before we actually adopt this. So I assume someone will be at the next council meeting, too, to address those, and should we have any questions at that point, we could postpone it again further if we're not happy with the answers.
Absolutely, absolutely. What we'll do is I'll send out the memo clarifying the positions on those, and then at that time, at the next reading, if you want to make the changes that was appropriate, then we'll bring it up.
There's nothing else? We will take the vote on the ordinance.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. That concludes our agenda for this evening. We do have a couple of announcements. Rock in the Rivers Concert Series continues on Thursday throughout the month of August. City offices will be closed on Monday, September the 5th for Labor Day, and the next regular city council meeting will be September the 12th. If there is, is there anything else from council?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald.
I would just like to clarify for the public, there's been a lot of discussion on social media that the offshore races for Port Huron have been canceled, and I wanted to clarify that they are not and that the race is indeed going on. And the time trials will be on Saturday, the final race is on Sunday, beginning at noon with, I believe the kickoff is 11:30. They are correct in that there is no band or festival or beer tent this year, but again, the powerboat race is happening. This is an event that has gone on for the last couple of years, and we're hoping to see it grow, but it is not a city event, it's not a city council event, nor was the festival. And so there's some confusion out there on that we canceled everything, and I want to make sure that it, people understand it's not canceled, and please come down and enjoy the races.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?